Ready as we'll ever be.
I guess.
Hello, I'm Kim Norton, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I'd like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates, the audience at home, and those viewing at a later time. I'd like to welcome you to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a league, do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum. And the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the League of Women Voters Rochester, the Post Bulletin, and the Chamber of Commerce, and also from members of the public. If you would like to submit questions for a future forum, visit our Facebook page, "League of Women Voters Rochester, Minnesota," for information and deadline for submission. As there is never enough time to cover all of the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions were not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates for running for office and for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features the candidate for school board seat three. Candidates for this seat are Karen McLaughlin and Deb Seelinger. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance. Candidates will then have 75 seconds to answer each to answer. The candidates will have two minutes to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to the candidates that you make your answers as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use your entire time for your answer, but please finish your sentence when your time is up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible this evening. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards, and these can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket in front of you after you have used it. The timekeeper tonight is League of Women Voters Rochester member Kristin Pavick. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by League of Women Voters Rochester members Maggie Brimajoin, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy-Smet, and Kathy Swessel. Asking questions will be Jordan Shearer from the Post Bulletin and Brent Ackerman from the Chamber of Commerce. We're ready to begin. Candidate McLaughlin will begin with the opening statement.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the sponsors for tonight's event, the League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library. This is such an important event this year when, with the pandemic, it's hard to get information out, particularly on local candidates, so I really appreciate the opportunity. My name is Karen McLaughlin. I have been a resident of Rochester for about 20 years, and I've made my home here to raise my son, who's a 10th grader at Mayo High School. I am also a licensed attorney. I've been practicing here in Rochester for that 20 years. I currently work for a nonprofit agency that represents low-income people in divorces, child custody, and orders for protection. During my career, I also spent about 15 years in the county attorney's office here in Olmsted County, in juvenile court, where I learned in-depth about the issues that our young people and their families face in our community, which had a huge impact on me and my views about the world. I've also been involved in our community as a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission, as well as other boards and commissions. I am running because when I heard and realized we were in the middle of the pandemic, my first question for myself was, how can I help? I'm a problem solver, and I looked at the school board and determined that I think it's time for some fresh faces on that school board. My campaign is based on an interest in having all voices being represented at the school board, and being more intentional about that in terms of teachers, staff, families, students, and the community, and being more welcoming for all of those groups. It's time to implement a curriculum that's anti-racist, and it's time to dig deeper into racial disparities in the discipline data. The issues I see the school board facing are equity. It's time to take action. I think it's important to have strong community partnerships. In terms of budget decisions, it's important to invest in public education, people, and mental health. And I believe that it's important for the board to both communicate with the public and focus on a stronger strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, candidate Seelinger.
I'm Deborah Seelinger, and I'm running for my third term on the Rochester School Board. Running for office in ordinary times can be overwhelming, and now we're in a global pandemic, and things are getting really complicated. So why now, and why again? Because I believe our district needs strong leadership and continuity of service. There is a steep learning curve for school board members, no matter how prepared we come, and it takes this time to make critical decisions, strategic thinking, and vision. While these are challenging times, I also believe there is great potential for opportunity. COVID-19 has turned education upside down, but some of us have been saying for years, let's disrupt the system. During pandemic learning last spring, our educators demonstrated that they were nimble and flexible. Did everything go smoothly? No. But we took what we learned and focused on ways to make learning this fall much better. I believe our staff is up to the challenge of hybrid and distance learning. What else has been exposed by that pandemic? Schools are doing more than educating students. Meals, technology, access to internet, mental health, childcare. Those of us in the system know, we've been doing these things for a long time. This is what district staff has always done. Now it seems that everyone knows, and more people want to support our schools. My work on and off the board continues to be focused on community engagement. More than stakeholder feedback, true engagement leads us to finding solutions together, and I believe that I can help this board engage our citizens more proactively. I'm excited to be here tonight, and I thank the league, Post Bulletin, and Chamber for being here, as well as my fellow candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. And now our questions for the candidates. We're going to start our questions this evening with a question from the Chamber of Commerce, and candidate Seelinger will answer first.
The COVID-19 pandemic has caused significant pressure on many in our community, including working parents with school-aged kids. As children are now back in school and participating in remote learning this fall, what steps do you think can be taken to help parents manage both their work and their kids' remote learning schedules?
I imagine there are great struggles for our working parents, and we've heard from quite a few of them. One thing that I think is really important is that our community steps up to help, and we've seen them do this in a variety of ways. I know the Chamber has listed a lot of opportunities for students to learn in pods, in 125 Live, at the Rochester Athletic Club. Those opportunities will really help our students get focused and our parents be more assured. But I think our employers also have to help us, too. They need to know that our parents are really stretched thin being working and supporting their students at home, so if they can offer any flexibility in a work schedule, or technology, or space for children's learning, maybe in their business, that would be a great help to our community.
Thank you. Candidate McLaughlin.
I have a lot of empathy for those parents. Like I said, I have a 10th grader at Mayo High School. I'm not so far away from those days of struggling with balancing childcare and work in a regular environment. And when I learned about the hybrid plan for the district, that was one of my first thoughts, is how are the parents going to manage that when it's basically two different schedules in one week? It's extremely difficult to find childcare in general, and it's even more difficult to fit a schedule like that. So I really think that, I think that there's things perhaps the district can do to alleviate some of that stress in terms of looking at options, if this is going to be a longer-term plan, to provide some distance learning opportunities for young people who are in childcare, so that they can do some of that distance learning while in the school-aged childcare program in the days that they're not in the building. I do agree with Ms. Seelinger about employer flexibility. I think that that's a key. I look at it from the perspective that in the long term, it's important for those employers to look at options that are flexible, because it's important for those employers to keep those employees that are doing such great work for them. Thank you.
The League of Women Voters will ask this question, and candidate McLaughlin will answer first. And the question is about academic success. The district set the goal of having every student read at grade level by the end of third grade. We have not met this goal. What do you think we should do to improve reading scores?
I believe that there's a couple of things that the district can do, and I'm conscious of the budget constraints that the district is going to face in the coming years. But I also think it's important to look in the long term for that academic success. And I view that benchmark of reading by grade level by the end of third grade as one of the key indicators of those young people's success, not only in school, but in their entire future. I believe it's important to take a very close look at funding universal pre-K here in Rochester. I think that that's one of the best ways to give those young people a good start in being ready for kindergarten, getting those skills early on so that they can meet that benchmark of being at third grade reading level by the end of third grade. I know that that's an expensive proposition, but I also think it requires fully funding public education and electing officials who support that goal as well. Thank you.
Candidate Seelinger.
As Ms. McLaughlin said, we know that reading by third grade is a key indicator for future success. The district has purchased some new literacy materials this year, a new program, and I think that's really going to help. You know, over the years, if you've been in education, you've seen different theories of learning come and go, but we really need to dig down and see what actually works for kids. And then, at the same time, really dig into what individual students need by differentiation. We know that we're all different kinds of learners, and so I think that our kids deserve the same. We need to be supported scaffolding, pre-K through K on literacy efforts, and we have some of those resources here in our community. One of the really fun things I've been able to do as a PTA member is attend kindergarten kickoff and do some work at the farmer's market. And what we do is pair activity with a literary prize, and so kids get a book about activity. And so sometimes I think looking at other ways to get books in the hands of young children is really going to help. Thank you.
Our next question will come from Jordan at the Post Bulletin, and the person to answer that first will be candidate Seelinger.
Rochester Public Schools is looking at a budget deficit coming in the coming years. What is the responsibility of the school board to address that while still looking towards the needs of the students in the district?
Thank you. I got to the second question, and my glasses fell off because of my mask, so I'll try to do my best without. So Minnesota has one of the most complicating funding formulas in the nation, and I was really pleased in the last year that the Governor's School Finance Work Group has been meeting. And what they're really trying to do is simplify the funding formula and stabilize funding. We are proud that our own finance director, John Carlson, is part of that work group. We also have a local resident who is on the state PTA board on that group, and so they're really looking at all the different silos of money. We really need to do some good advocating and reaching out at the state level. What we're going to do here locally is be good stewards of what we have, control what we can control, which sadly isn't a whole lot. We know that we are a people business, and so 80% of our general fund goes to funding salaries and benefits for our teaching staff and all our staff. So we need to make sure that we're getting the best we can for our investment. I think going forward, when we look at budget cuts, we're going to have to decide on some sort of a rubric to make decisions and how we're going to prioritize those cuts, and then, at the same time, look for ways to save money and be efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McLaughlin.
Thank you. I think that one of the issues that the district will face related to the budget is the fact that we are a fairly large district in the state. I think that we're very fortunate that the district so far has used extremely good fiscal management, and I believe that that will serve the district well as we're entering this budget deficit area. As I said earlier, I do think it's important at the state level to fully fund public schools and elect leaders to our state legislature who are prepared to do that. I also think it's a time to look at community support for education, particularly in response to the pandemic, whether it be local businesses who can help support various programs, do some sort of creative work with the community, as well as the state and local government in any pandemic funds that are coming through those entities. I agree with Ms. Seelinger that we are a very people-centered organization, which is not unusual, but I feel it's very important in those budget decisions to put people first and look at the school worker rights at all levels in terms of fair collective bargaining, working conditions, and issues of unemployment or work disruption for the staff. I believe that the community can step up and do this, and I believe that we're ready to. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question is from the League of Women Voters, and candidate McLaughlin will answer first. Based on studies, the Rochester Public Schools has disparities in the discipline of students. How can we make discipline more uniform throughout the system?
Thank you for the question from the league. This is one of the issues that prompted me to run for school board. As I indicated earlier, I had about 15 years in juvenile court here locally and got very firsthand views of young people in the 10 to 17 range, who many of them were facing many issues, many of them coming out of the school district and their education. So I feel like I can bring that experience to this issue. In terms of ways to make it more uniform, I feel like we don't have the answer to that yet, and I want to be on the board to really dig into the data further and ask a lot of questions about that. What I take away from watching the board meetings and seeing the data that's being represented is it's really just data and, you know, telling us the information based on which district and which minority group, but I don't think they're at the place yet to look at the whys of what's behind that data. And I think they really need to, and I think they need to do that now. And I'd really like to be a part of that. It's one of the reasons I'm running. Thank you.
Candidate Seelinger.
So we know that discipline disparities have plagued our district, and it's hard and it's sad. When we look at the data, however, you know, if there is any bright spot, we know that over 95% of our students don't have an office referral. So we know that it's a small percentage of our students who are continuing to have, continuing to be referred to the office. When our principals speak about this, they really, you know, they know who these students are, they know that some of the interactions that are taking place. And so I think that delving down at the building level is really what's going to be able to help us move forward on this. The other thing I think about is, you know, nationally, we talk about suspensions and expulsions. We do very, very few expulsions here in Rochester. I will say suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, I do wonder what their effectiveness is. We know we see a lot of them for things like vaping, and sending a kid home for vaping in the bathroom for two days or a day really isn't going to make any difference in the behavior. And so maybe something that's more restorative, or educational, or has some other impact, I think would be a better way to go, instead of just putting them out of school for the day.
And we have a rebuttal from candidate McLaughlin.
Thank you. In hearing what Ms. Seelinger says about this issue, I think it's important to point out that I've been listening to the school board meetings since about January pretty regularly, and they are long meetings, and I listen. I would like to hear those principals speaking at those board meetings or in some other forum, so that the public can hear what those principals are seeing on a regular basis. It's not an issue of, you know, sharing private information, but what are they learning through this process? I think that that's what's missing in the current debate.
Our next question is going to come from Brent Ackerman from the Chamber of Commerce, and I would like candidate Seelinger, please, to answer first.
Okay, as you know, Rochester was awarded a state grant to be the first community in Minnesota to build a PTEC school. That's Pathways in Technology Early College High School. How will you continue to support programs and initiatives such as PTEC geared towards preparing our students to become workforce-ready by the time they graduate?
Well, thank you for that. We are so excited about PTEC. We are just starting our informational meetings in the next few weeks. I just was in another meeting with the principal of that program, and she's very excited to get that kicked off. And that's going to be for students starting in eighth grade, and they will start in eighth grade and go through as a cohort. And at the end, you know, they are going to have a high school diploma and some associate's degree in either healthcare field or technology. And it's really thrilling to have partnerships here. When I talk to folks around the state and even the nation, you know, they don't have programs like this. And so when they come in front of us as a board, we are thrilled. We know that this is a different way for students to learn. We know that we have great opportunity here locally with our businesses, with obviously Mayo, IBM, other large companies here, and so we continue to support that in every way we can. Thank you.
Candidate McLaughlin.
I looked a little bit into this PTEC program because I was so impressed by the district's support for it, and I definitely support it very strongly as well. One of the things that I learned about the program when I dug a little bit deeper, though, is that this is a global education model. I didn't hear that at the school board meeting that talked about what the program is, and I think that that's significant in the sense that their website talked about having this program all over the world, and we're going to have it here, so that's very exciting. The other thing that I don't believe that the school board or the presenters at the school board about this program emphasize, though, and I think it's critically important in terms of equity. This education model is designed to address socioeconomic disparities with emerging skills. That's what the focus is, and I didn't even hear that at the school board meeting, that's, you know, singing the praises of this program. And I think that's so critical to know, because it provides those students that face socioeconomic disparities with work experience, job shadowing, mentoring, and even a paid internship. So I think that's really exciting, and in terms of increasing college costs, that's exactly the population that we need to target until we can pass something that addresses the high cost of college education. So I think this is a great opportunity for our local students.
This question is a League of Women Voters question, and I'm going to modify it just a tiny bit here, because I'm going to clarify it. It's, I believe there's an assumption here that students are not going to be able to learn to the same degree during COVID while they're at home as they would in a regular day-to-day classroom. And so the question was, what do you think should be done to catch students up after the pandemic? And if you don't think that's the case, if you would respond to that, I'd appreciate it. And this question is to be answered first by candidate McLaughlin.
I think this is a great question, and I agree with what Ms. Seelinger said earlier about individual education and individual assessment of the students' needs and where they're at in their education. I think that that's going to be so critical, particularly in the time of the hybrid and distance learning, because it is different for the teachers, it is different for the students, and they're going to need to figure out together where the deficits are on any education goals that they have. So I think that there likely are going to be students, not perhaps all of them, but some that may need to catch up after the pandemic. I would focus on things like summer school next year, in broadening the programs available for summer school, and even looking at online classes for summer school next year, and the district providing them for the people who can't afford them. I think it's one of the best ways to catch up, or at least assess where the deficits are and a place to start. Thank you.
Candidate Seelinger.
Thanks, and thanks for your modification, Mayor Norton. It is a little sad to have the assumption that our students will have deficits next year. You know, I believe that we're still holding our students to high expectations, as well as our teachers. We have, we know that they have to be present, they have to be with our students as much as possible, as much synchronous learning as possible, and so those things, I think, will really help. They're still going to be doing formative assessments along the way, and so I don't like to think of this as we're going to wait until the end of the year and then see where folks are at. We're going to keep monitoring students as we go. The other thing that I think we're really focused on, and what I've told staff when I've seen them, is let's continue to build relationships, let's continue to make connections. And yes, academics are important, but we have to have some of those foundational things in place, especially during these times when children are really anxious and scared and confused, and the world is just, is just, you know, not a safe-feeling place. I think it's much more important for our staff, our teachers, to be spending time, getting to know our students, getting to know them individually, what their situation is, and then focus on the academics as those relationships are made. Thank you.
Our next question will be offered by Jordan Shearer from the Post Bulletin, and candidate Seelinger, you will answer this first.
Earlier, you both referenced the need to discuss with the state in regards to the budget and whatnot. So what do you see is the school board's relationship with the Minnesota Department of Education, and how would you go about, how would you move forward with that relationship with the state?
Thank you. You know, school board members follow Minnesota Department of Education. I was on a work group a few years ago with the development of the Every Student Succeeds Education Act. That was more as my, in my PTA role, not my school board role. We have been in discussion recently about forming a legislative committee of our school board, and that was brought forth by Director Workman, and so we're looking at that because we feel like we need to take a little bit more proactive stance with our legislators. You know, we're really lucky here in Rochester to see our representatives out and about at meetings, at events, and so kind of catch their ear in a less formal way. And I think that having a legislative committee will sort of solidify and make a process of that. We know that, you know, we monitor some of the things that are going on. We know Superintendent has done some testifying up at the state Capitol, but I think the school board members could do more in and of themselves. And we do have MSBA, our school board association does a lot of lobbying on our behalf. And we do have MSBA, our school board association does a lot of lobbying on our behalf and monitoring, but I think individually, we could definitely do more.
Candidate McLaughlin.
I believe that the relationship with the school board and the Department of Education is an important one, particularly as I saw through the pandemic, the Department of Education providing really excellent guidance on determining how to open the schools and open them safely. I agree with Ms. Seelinger that advocacy is another aspect of that relationship, and I believe with my attorney skills that I could help provide Rochester's voice in that process, as well as the fact that the Rochester Public Schools is a large outstate district, that I think we can have a strong voice at the Capitol if we choose to do so and express our voice on the legislative issues, and not just limit that to the superintendent, that I believe that, that all of the school board members would be appropriate witnesses on legislation to testify before the legislature. I also believe I would bring the attorney's skills of research and writing to assist in any process like this, as well as helping draft and review proposed legislation that may be presented through the Department of Education to school boards to look at and provide that added value to the board.
Thank you. And we're moving into the second half of the program with community questions, and so I'm going to start. This first one will be answered by candidate McLaughlin first. And the question from the community was, how will you increase the academic success and graduation rates of all of our students?
I believe the answer to that question starts with equity in education. From the pre-K level and even the early childhood assessment level through high school, that academic success is impacted by the district's response to equity issues in education. I believe it then carries forward to the graduation rates and the importance of keeping all the students engaged so that they can get to graduate, get through high school and get to the graduation level to graduate from Rochester Public Schools. I believe that there's been a lot of talk about equity in the district for the last couple of years, and I think it's time to act. And I believe that the actions such as incorporating anti-racism curriculum into the current curriculum will help students feel more welcome if they're not of the majority of students, but they're, they're a growing minority population. I think it's important to address that now. I think it's important to take action now, and I believe that those actions will make the students feel more welcome, and that's what it's designed to do, that will both improve their academic success and the graduation rates.
Candidate Seelinger.
I'm just a whole host of trouble here. They told me I need to move my mic, so I'm going to do that. Apologies, Karen, for my shuffling during your speaking. So are we going to support academic success and graduation rates for all our students? A few things that we're working on that I think are really exciting is our grading for learning, so changing our grading system, which is based in equity. And we're just, we just had started this last year in some pilot forms, and it comes with four big ideas. And I think it's, it got rolled out a little bit last year, maybe not everybody's heard about it, but I think it's a way to look at grading in a more equitable way, and I think that's going to really help all of our students. Also, our graduate profile, the core values that we're looking for in there about being a critical thinker, ethical contributor, there's six of them, which I've now forgotten most of them, but they're all really focused on the skills needed for graduation. When we talk about student success, you know, we, we look at, sometimes we think of outdated models of when we were students or maybe our older children were students, and, you know, we really don't, we focus a lot on grades and As and Bs and things like that. But I think at the heart, we really want to focus on the skills that they're going to need to be successful adults, have successful careers. And so I think the district is really moving forward in those ways, and I think those are things that are really going to help, help all of our students. Thank you.
We have a rebuttal from candidate McLaughlin.
I'll just rebrief on this, but the topic of grading for learning, I heard about this at a school board meeting, and, you know, I'm a pretty involved parent, but I'm like, I didn't know what that was, so I did a little bit of research, and, and I agree with, with Ms. Seelinger that I think it's, it is based in equity, and I think that it will be helpful. But reason, I raised the rebuttal, though, is that I don't believe that that's been communicated out to the public as well as it could be, either to parents or the general community. It's a big revamp of grading of our students, and I think that it's important for both the parents and families and the general community to learn more about.
The next question is concerning discipline, and candidate Seelinger will answer first. How do you plan to discipline students that commit a first-time offense, for example, bring drugs on school property, without permanently damaging the record for one mistake?
Wow, that's a big question. So I think the thing that, that gets us tripped up in some of these, when we talk about something like drugs, when we're talking about things that are illegal, we know that we have a, a task to keep all of our students safe. And so if there's drugs in the building and that's not making our students safe, we need to do something about that. Now, the problem is, is that, as I'm sure this question is alluding to, is if a student gets pushed into the legal system, which obviously Karen has a lot of background in and can speak to much better than I can, what happens there? And so we really have to focus on what happens within our own school walls, what we can control. I think that this is part of that digging down and making relationships with students. You know, there's a difference, I think there's a difference in terms of consequences between distributing drugs versus having drugs or being found with drugs on campus. And so I think we really need to look at the, the individual situation and maybe the, the reasons behind the actions first.
Candidate McLaughlin.
So this gives me a chance to put my former prosecutor hat on a little bit, and it raises all kinds of questions for me, so bear with me. I'll try to be succinct. It raises questions for, when we talk about bringing drugs to school, the question, what kind of drugs? I, when I was a prosecutor, I saw a lot of young people possession of a small amount of marijuana. That, as a first-time offense, wouldn't even enter the court system if they don't have any other issues that they're addressing as well. It would go to a restorative justice program referred to as our diversion program. It would meet with a panel of people, get some consequences, might need to do a CD assessment, a chemical dependency assessment, to see if there are any issues with some sort of dependency on the drug. I also saw a lot of young people who would share their ADHD medication. That's more serious because it's then a non-prescription use of something that can be dangerous if, if misused because they're not using it for a purposeful dis, a subscription. So it's a much more serious offense in those type of situations or other types of drugs. Or I would want to know the details, is it, is the intent to sell the drugs at school? That's very serious, and it can cause harm to the other students and the whole school environment. So I would want to know a lot of questions about that. If it were more serious drugs, I believe that it is something that would need to enter the court system, but there are various privacy aspects to the juvenile court that could have different impacts on that situation depending on the particular facts. So I do believe that that's something that I could help the board have much more understanding. Thank you.
We have another community question, and this will, candidate McLaughlin will answer first, and that is, how do you feel about opt-in lottery-style district-wide option schools?
So in terms of full disclosure, I was a parent of a child who, we used all those words, the opt-in lottery-style distance learning school. My son was a student at Lincoln from K to eight, and I personally believe that he very much benefited from that small school environment, and really, even at the beginning, felt like we won the lottery when he was accepted into that program. There were only 15 families that got in that year, and there were about 300 families on the waiting list, so we feel very fortunate. In hindsight now, after him being through that program and learning more about the process and learning more about education equity, I do believe that there are changes that could be made to make that lottery more equitable and to increase the education to all families in the district so that they can see the advantages and disadvantages of either a neighborhood school or a district-wide school. One of the downsides is a longer transportation. My son had to transfer buses in first grade, which was pretty scary as a parent. So there are some pros and cons, but I think that those district-wide schools provide some unique characteristics, like long follow with the 45-15 schedule. A lot of parents really appreciate that to prevent the summer slide, so I think they can be more creative. That's one of the pros, but I think that it's much, it's important for the district to provide more education about those programs so parents can make informed decisions.
Candidate Seelinger.
Thank you. I think, you know, one of our highlights of our district is our district-wide options. I too had a, I had one child who went to Fridale Middle School, our choice option, that we planned to, voted to suspend that program last night, and one went to Kellogg. So the, the thing that really, when we start looking at the educational equity, what really concerned me about Fridale specifically was the low number of free and reduced-priced lunch families, the low number of special ed families, students, and the low number of EL students. And I think that, while the argument, you know, the argument against it was, well, fix the system, you know, I really had to think about fixing the system for everybody, not just a small group of people. The, the other thing that we noticed have kind of anecdotally, in terms of our district-wide option schools for our elementaries, is when we come to kindergarten roundup, there's a lot of parents who may choose just one, some choose two, some choose three, some choose four. And that sort of is concerning to us because if you truly want a Montessori program for your children, why are you also choosing core knowledge? Those are two very different things. And so we, we do feel that that could be an equity issue.
The next question is, again, a community question, and this goes to candidate Seelinger first. What do you see as the role of high schools in mentoring and assisting students to attend post-secondary high school options?
So I anecdotally serve on the concurrent enrollment committee out at RCTC, and in part, my position there is, as a parent of a child who took advantage of PSEO. I feel like for him, PSEO was a wonderful option. He did not succeed in a traditional model of high school. He had different aspirations, and quite honestly, when he left high school with over 23 credits for college, it was a huge savings for us when he moved on. So I think we should do everything we can to, to encourage students to take classes in PSEO or college in the schools, or advanced placement and take the test to get potential college credit that way. We know with, you know, our students of color, taking even one college class can help them be encouraged to take more college classes or to enter into a college program. So I think we should continue to support that program and continue to support children going there. Thank you.
Candidate McLaughlin.
I believe the school, the high schools can take a strong and important role in mentoring and assisting students with those post-secondary options. As I think about that, just sitting here, though, what I would like to see is that if we're looking at the racial disparities in the discipline system, I think we should also take a look at the racial disparities in those post-secondary options. Anecdotally, what I'm understanding is that the advanced placement and honors courses are less diverse than the regular school population, and I would want the district to take a close look at that to determine if there's more that the high schools can do. You know, it's not the high school, obviously, but the, the educators and the counselors looking at young people who, who perhaps have some aspirations or skills in an area but haven't been taking those honors courses or those post, the, the advanced placement courses, to really look at that. And perhaps it's a focus of the, you know, the freshman and sophomore level to really encourage those students to take a broader look at what can be available to them, because I agree with Ms. Seelinger, that it can really decrease their costs. I think it's also really important to encourage them to pursue their, their post-secondary education, and I think it's the best way to, to get those students on that path.
The next question is about youth and community involvement, and candidate McLaughlin will answer first. How do you plan to involve youth in your decisions and ensure that their views are heard?
That's a great question, and I feel very fortunate to have connected through, you know, it's an opportunity through the challenges that are presented to our community through the murder of George Floyd. There is a group of students who have gathered together, they're known, known as the Rochester Community Initiative, and I am so impressed by the work that they have done to lead protests in town, to really push the conversation forward about how our community is going to respond to social justice issues that are presented to us, particularly the murder of George Floyd and the aftermath of that. The other non-incumbent candidates and I have gotten together and had some events together, and just this last Sunday, we had the RCI students asking us questions about how we view our, our candidacy for the public school board and addressing, you know, how we would, how we would approach the issues of equity and other issues. We're having another session in two weeks for us to ask them questions, and I'm really excited about that. But I think it's opportunities like that that we need to take advantage of these students, not take advantage of the students, take advantage of the opportunities to talk to them and really bring their voice. They have such a strong voice, and it's getting stronger every day, and we need to hear that.
Candidate Seelinger.
Thank you. Yes, the RCI students are amazing. I have been able to meet with them a few times as part of the Community Engagement Committee of the School Board. They are very, very impressive in their, the way they speak and their activism. We also have the Student School Board, which we've had for a long time in our district, and so I am back on that committee after being off for a few years. We're thinking about how we can do that via distance learning, but that brings together students from all over the secondary, all over the district and each secondary school. And we meet monthly, and we generally have a topic that the students are discussing and sharing about what's going on in their building and issues that they might have. Superintendent is also there, taking questions. And then the other piece of that is that we ask them to be really engaged back with their building principal, because we don't want them to just come and talk to us about issues. We want them to be advocating for themselves back at their home buildings. And so I think that that program is really, continues to be strong and continues to grow, and I think that's a great way to have student voice represented at our board level.
So we have just a couple more questions before we wrap up, and so I have a few lightning round questions. There, there are yes or no answers, questions with yes or no answers. So we'll try a couple of these. The first one, you can expound on a little bit, and then the next two will be yes or no's. So the question is, do you feel we need more counselors in elementary, middle, and high schools?
Yes.
And why? If you care to expound.
We know that the ratio between counselors and mental health professionals is not great. I don't know what it is, but it's very, it's terrible. So having at least one full-time in each elementary school, middle and high school, I think is a bare minimum what we need to do. Increasing as much as possible, I think, is going to really help all of our students.
Candidate McLaughlin.
I also emphatically answer yes. I believe that this is an area that the district has improved on in recent years and does well when compared to the state level, but where I look at it now when we're facing budget cuts, I think it's a really important area to recognize and maintain the funding as best as possible because, really, in the post-pandemic world, we're going to see more mental health concerns with our young people rather than less.
Okay, now the next two are yes or no questions. The one is on mental health and The one is on mental health and wellbeing, and this is candidate McLaughlin can answer first. Do you feel, uh, let's see, do you feel we need full-time nurses in the schools?
Yes.
Candidate Seelinger.
Yes.
That was correct. And the last lightning round question, and we'll have candidate Seelinger answer first. Should the school board have a diversity goal in hiring school staff?
No.
Candidate McLaughlin.
Yes.
So I want to thank you all for answering those questions. And we are now moving into the, the concluding portion of our program this evening. We will now hear the closing statements from each candidate. Candidates will have two minutes to speak. And due to a draw at the beginning of the evening, candidate Seelinger will go first.
So thank you to the viewers, thank you to the League, Post Bulletin, and Chamber for hosting us this evening and putting us in the hot seats, even though we're six feet apart. It's still pretty hot. I have so enjoyed my time serving on the Rochester Public School Board. I have continued passion for public education, continued commitment to community engagement, service to my community, and a governance mindset. I often tell people that the school board is not the city council of the school district, that our job is governance and governance through policy. And so I try to keep that present and forefront in all of my decisions. I am so proud of our district working through this pandemic. Our strong teachers and leaders and our student nutrition staff and custodians are working so hard, and we appreciate them so much. The things I love about the Rochester Public School District that I've already mentioned is its uniqueness. Our community schools are amazing places, and I am proud to serve with, serve on their leadership team. Our, our specials, our special programs for right-fit students and our project search candidates are really amazing, also serving the diverse needs of our learners. I'm thrilled that I still have the support of my family to continue this journey. I have one son left in the district. He is a senior at the ALC this year. And I know that they are proud of me, and I know that they support me. And that, that compels me to move forward and keep doing the work that I'm doing. Thank you.
Candidate McLaughlin.
I'd like to start by thanking our sponsors tonight, the League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and the library. Thank you so much for putting the resources into this important program. The key to my candidacy is one vision, and that vision is strong schools build strong communities. I believe we have a community that's based on growth and innovation and more than enough people who make enough in their lives to have more than adequate financial resources. I believe it's the time to invest those qualities in our public school system. That means supporting teachers and staff every way possible, including putting people first in terms of any potential budget cuts that we're looking at in the near future. It also means fully supporting full funding of public education and candidates who share that vision. I value community leadership that addresses community issues that everyone is facing in terms of the pandemic and the very real and important social justice issues that our community faces. I have demonstrated through community advocacy that I have a strong commitment to public service. I've also served on a diverse group of commissions in terms of human rights, immigrant rights, and other local board involvement. I have the desire and the knowledge of how our local government works to build strong partnerships with our community leaders. I'm also ready to share my enthusiasm, persistence, and time to bring these qualities to the school board and the broader Rochester Public Schools community. I believe that the district generally does a good job, but I think we can do better. That's why the school board needs some fresh faces to move the district forward as quickly as possible to be responsive to the important needs of all of our community members. Moving forward on equity goals takes more than talk and a lofty three-year plan. It takes action. And every action may not be perfect. We might not get it right the first time, but it's time to act and to put in the hard work to move forward to be a more fair and just education system in terms of everyone at the table, regardless of their race, their ethnicity, their family structure, their economic status.
Thank you very much.
And disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you, for your, your time tonight. I would like to thank the candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and also thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I'd like to remind you that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks, too, to our partners at the table here with me, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce and the Rochester Post Bulletin.